Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for attending today's meeting of the Raleigh City Council. We're going to start today with a proclamation. I believe staff has a presentation that they will give first.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We are so excited to come back to you all as we previewed last council meeting about National Bullying Prevention Month. I'm happy to introduce to you our representative from Parks and Rec, Tori Spa, who's been with us for over 10 years. So I would pass it over to Tori.
We urge all citizens to work toward the prevention of bullying and consider pledging to be part of the solution to end bullying in all its forms. Because I believe I can be part of the solution to end bullying and cyberbullying. Mayor, Council, City Manager, City Attorney, and City Clerk, please take this pledge with me. Please repeat after me. I pledge to remember kindness.
I pledge to remember kindness.
Empower others to call out unwanted aggressive behavior.
Empower others to call out unwanted aggressive behavior.
Support people who have been affected by bullying or cyberbullying.
Support people who have been affected by bullying or cyberbullying.
Participate in dialogue.
Participate in dialogue.
That is inclusive of others.
That is inclusive of others.
Educate my friends and family.
Educate my friends and family.
About the harmful effects of bullying.
About the harmful effects of bullying.
Communicate honestly without attacking.
Communicate honestly without attacking.
Or belittling others.
Or belittling others.
And treat others with respect.
And treat others with respect.
Thank you.
Michelle, is it time for me to read the proclamation now?
Yes, Mayor, would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Whereas bullying is defined as unwanted aggressive behavior or intimidation that may inflict physical, psychological, or social harm on a person or group of people. And whereas bullying has become increasingly prevalent and damaging to children and adults, especially through the use of technology, also known as cyberbullying. And whereas the City of Raleigh offers a wide variety of youth and adult programs designed to empower future leaders, foster creativity, and promote diversity, equity, inclusion, and friendships. And whereas we, as a city council, all agree that unwanted aggressive behavior has no place in our community, and that we are committed to offering all residents an environment that holds promise, provides security, and gives residents an opportunity to live, work, play, and learn. And whereas, at a time when engaging in civic affairs has become increasingly divisive, local governments have an opportunity to demonstrate how people from all backgrounds and perspectives can come together in civil discourse. And whereas communities across the United States are commemorating Bullying Prevention Month in October, challenging people of all ages to pledge to end unwanted aggressive behavior. Now, therefore, July, Marion Baldwin, Mayor of Raleigh, hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 in the City of Raleigh as Bullying Prevention Month. We urge all residents to work toward the prevention of bullying and consider pledging to be part of the solution to end bullying in all its forms. Because I believe I can be part of the solution to end bullying and cyberbullying. Mayor, Council, City Manager, City Attorney, and City Clerk, please take this pledge with me. Please repeat after me. I pledge to remember kindness.
I pledge to remember kindness.
Empower others to call out unwanted aggressive behavior.
Empower others to call out unwanted aggressive behavior.
Support people who have been affected by bullying or cyberbullying.
Support people who have been affected by bullying or cyberbullying.
Participate in dialogue.
Participate in dialogue.
That is inclusive of others.
That is inclusive of others.
Educate my friends and family.
Educate my friends and family.
About the harmful effects of bullying.
About the harmful effects of bullying.
Communicate honestly without attacking.
Communicate honestly without attacking.
Or belittling others.
Or belittling others.
And treat others with respect.
And treat others with respect.
Thank you.
Michelle, is it time for me to read the proclamation now?
Yes, Mayor, would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Whereas bullying is defined as unwanted aggressive behavior or intimidation that may inflict physical, psychological, or social harm on a person or group of people. And whereas bullying has become increasingly prevalent and damaging to children and adults, especially through the use of technology, also known as cyberbullying. And whereas the City of Raleigh offers a wide variety of youth and adult programs designed to empower future leaders, foster creativity, and promote diversity, equity, inclusion, and friendships. And whereas we, as a city council, all agree that unwanted aggressive behavior has no place in our community, and that we are committed to offering all residents an environment that holds promise, provides security, and gives residents an opportunity to live, work, play, and learn. And whereas, at a time when engaging in civic affairs has become increasingly divisive, local governments have an opportunity to demonstrate how people from all backgrounds and perspectives can come together in civil discourse. And whereas communities across the United States are commemorating Bullying Prevention Month in October, challenging people of all ages to pledge to end unwanted aggressive behavior. Now, therefore, July, Marion Baldwin, Mayor of Raleigh, hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 in the City of Raleigh as Bullying Prevention Month. We urge all residents to work toward the prevention of bullying and consider pledging to be part of the solution to end bullying in all its forms. Because I believe I can be part of the solution to end bullying and cyberbullying. Mayor, Council, City Manager, City Attorney, and City Clerk, please take this pledge with me. Please repeat after me. I pledge to remember kindness.
I pledge to remember kindness.
Empower others to call out unwanted aggressive behavior.
Empower others to call out unwanted aggressive behavior.
Support people who have been affected by bullying or cyberbullying.
Support people who have been affected by bullying or cyberbullying.
Participate in dialogue.
Participate in dialogue.
That is inclusive of others.
That is inclusive of others.
Educate my friends and family.
Educate my friends and family.
About the harmful effects of bullying.
About the harmful effects of bullying.
Communicate honestly without attacking.
Communicate honestly without attacking.
Or belittling others.
Or belittling others.
And treat others with respect.
And treat others with respect.
Thank you.
Michelle, is it time for me to read the proclamation now?
Yes, Mayor, would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Whereas bullying is defined as unwanted aggressive behavior or intimidation that may inflict physical, psychological, or social harm on a person or group of people. And whereas bullying has become increasingly prevalent and damaging to children and adults, especially through the use of technology, also known as cyberbullying. And whereas the City of Raleigh offers a wide variety of youth and adult programs designed to empower future leaders, foster creativity, and promote diversity, equity, inclusion, and friendships. And whereas we, as a city council, all agree that unwanted aggressive behavior has no place in our community, and that we are committed to offering all residents an environment that holds promise, provides security, and gives residents an opportunity to live, work, play, and learn. And whereas, at a time when engaging in civic affairs has become increasingly divisive, local governments have an opportunity to demonstrate how people from all backgrounds and perspectives can come together in civil discourse. And whereas communities across the United States are commemorating Bullying Prevention Month in October, challenging people of all ages to pledge to end unwanted aggressive behavior. Now, therefore, July, Marion Baldwin, Mayor of Raleigh, hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 in the City of Raleigh as Bullying Prevention Month. We urge all residents to work toward the prevention of bullying and consider pledging to be part of the solution to end bullying in all its forms. And we just heard and repeated the pledge, so thank you all for doing that, and we now hereby proclaim October Bullying Prevention Month. Thank you. Okay, next we have, and thank you to the staff for taking the lead on this, but also pulling together a campaign during the month of October to reinforce that. I think that's very effective, so thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda, and one item has been pulled, that is C5, by Councilmember Cox. So I will take a motion from one of the council members to approve this consent agenda. Mayor Procham Stewart, do I have a second? Councilmember Branch, all in favor? Okay, now we will go to C5.
Yes, thank you. As I was reviewing C5, I was reminded of a recent WRL report that pointed out a study of Raleigh with 52 peer cities, and Raleigh came in fourth from the bottom in terms of pay for first responders. And then, as I was reviewing the policies that were laid out in C5, I was reminded about how, really, I think we need to take another look at our vacation policy, in particular for firefighters. Firefighters work about 240 hours a month compared to normal office workers who work 40 hours a week or about 160 hours a month. And firefighters, like all other city employees, accrue vacation time at the same rate. So, for example, if you have enough years of service in, you might accrue one and a half days of vacation per month. However, if a firefighter wants to take an entire day off, they have to use two days' worth of vacation time, whereas a regular office worker would have to use only one vacation day. And I know that our HR director, Fagan Stackhouse, sent an email about this, and I reviewed it very quickly, and he said that what Raleigh does is comparable to what other cities in our region do. And I would like to ask that staff go back and take a look at who we compare ourselves to. I'm reminded that we often compare ourselves to other high-tech cities such as San Francisco, Silicon Valley, Austin, Texas, Boston. But when we compare ourselves in terms of first responder salaries, we often turn to southern, the southern region, and we compare ourselves to states like Mississippi and Alabama. And I really think we need to take another look at how we're compensating our first responders, and in particular, I really want us to take a look at our vacation policy for our firefighters, so that we can find a way so that you don't have to spend their vacation time at twice the rate of other employees in order to take a Friday off to be with their families for the weekend. So that's my comment. I don't, I hope that we can move forward and take a fresh look at this, and that's really about all I have in terms of any recommended actions. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager, I did read the email from our HR director, and I see that there's comparisons to other communities ranging from Charlotte to Durham to Fayetteville to Richmond to Austin. And it all seems fairly consistent, but in some instances, we actually offer more time, and then in some less time. Could you address this, please, and how we came to get to where we are?
Thank you, Mayor Baldwin. We also have Fagan Stackhouse in the audience who can also speak to this item. And when we look at total rewards for all of our employees, we look at the total benefit package, and a portion of that is the accrued leave and how leave is accrued. Many states offer different options in the way of leave accrual, particularly some that are unionized states, look at it from one perspective and add additional. Some entities actually dock employees for sleep time. We don't. We pay an employee for the total 24-hour, 12-hour, or 8-hour work shift that they work. And so staff has looked at this issue and has found pretty much our policies to be in line with our peer cities for the most part, and Mr. Stackhouse is at the podium now. He can further elaborate on that.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Minister of Council, again, Fagan Stackhouse, HR Director. And that which the City Manager has indicated is exactly what we found. We did the benchmarking in North Carolina to Durham, and also there, as the Mayor indicated, in Virginia, to Texas. And we are fairly consistent. We don't dock people for the sleep time, and 24 hours would double. We're not looking at cost only. That would be in the tune of something like $3.5 million. That would be the annual cost to make that change, and we feel that it's pretty consistent. And there's the graduation up after so many years, then you gain more, and by the time that you reach 20 years of service, you are earning literally the 24 hours that is being in question here. So, for the most part, we feel that we're consistent. Some union environments may have something different than negotiate, but here in North Carolina, we are fairly consistent.
Thank you, Councilmember Branch.
Yeah, just so I'm clear from what you're saying, Fagan, is that the hours that they're saying they will have to use is, are still the number of hours that they are accruing and earning each month. So it would be the same for employees that have to use a full day, that are on an 8-hour schedule. Based on what they accrue, they're accruing what they will have to spend. Is that a good way to?
Yes, Councilmember Branch, that's how the accrual works. And as an aside, what you will also see is the accrual rate for other departments, the police department as an example, and there are others that work more than just 8 hours on a given day, certainly the police department does, certainly the emergency communications, Raleigh Water, solid waste, a number of those. But they all are using the same standards and as the gradations and the changes in the years, then they begin to accrue more. The longer you stay, the greater the accrual rates are for each employee.
Got you. Okay.
Okay? Any other questions? Councilmember Buffkin, then Knight.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Stackhouse, how are we doing on recruitment and retention in the fire department? I mean, and I asked that, obviously, this would tend to make Raleigh more attractive than our peer cities were we to make this change. But I guess the question I'm asking, is it needed? Would it be helpful? Are we having a problem with recruitment and retention?
Councilmember Knight, recruitment is not a significant problem at all. I would say that it's not a problem in the fire department. It's one of those occupations that people really love to be a part of, and they're attracted to it. And given my many years of experience, open the position up or the positions up, and you will find that there are a number of candidates in which to choose from. We're working more specifically around diversity in that area, and so a lot of our attention will be focused on increasing the diversity, whether it's gender, whether it's ethnicity, and so forth.
Okay, well, thank you for that answer. I would like to see us do better than our peer cities for our firefighters, so I'm interested in taking a look at this change. I'm not sure today's the right day to do it. You know, we don't do a whole lot of budget impacts like this outside of the regular budget process, but maybe there's an exception to be made here. I would like to see us take a closer look at this and do something nice for our firefighters. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Knight?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also agree with that. I'm not sure if we're in a hurry. I just saw Mr. Stackhouse's memo. It came out at 12:11. I really am just getting a look at it, and it's specific to this issue more than the general documents we got last week. So, you know, I don't know what committee would be best to put it in, but I would support putting in a committee to give us a little more time to look at it a little more critically and in a detailed manner. Thank you.
Any other questions? Based on Councilmember Buffkin's comments, I was going to suggest we put this back on the agenda for a meeting on the 16th as opposed to committee. I would like to ask staff, is there a sense of urgency here?
There's really no sense of urgency. What we've been able to do is to go back, look at a number of our policies, and we have extensive review. Actually, there's about nine levels of review that we take, and then once we are satisfied internally, we then go to the Civil Service Commission, present to them, and then back to the City Manager and up to here, the City Council. And we see these three policies, the General Leave Policy, which is being discussed right now, the Disability, Accommodation Disability Policy, the Military And he said that what Raleigh does is comparable to what other cities in our region do. And I would like to ask that staff go back and take a look at who we compare ourselves to. Uh, I'm reminded that we often compare ourselves uh, to other high-tech cities such as San Francisco, uh, Silicon Valley, uh, Austin, Texas, Boston. But when we compare ourselves in terms of first responder salaries, we often turn to uh, southern, the southern region and we compare ourselves to states like, like Mississippi and Alabama. And uh, I really think we need to take another look at how we're uh, yeah, compensating our first responders. And in particular, I really want us to take a look at our um, vacation policy for our firefighters so that we can find a way so that you don't have to uh, spend their vacation time at twice the rate of other employees in order to take a Friday off to be with their families for the weekend. So that's my comment. Um, I don't, I, I hope that we can move forward and, and take a fresh look at this. And um, and that's really about all I have uh, in terms of any recommended actions. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Um, City Manager, um, I did read the um, email from um, our HR Director. And I see that there's um, comparisons to other communities ranging from Charlotte to Durham to Fayetteville, to Richmond, to Austin. And all seems fairly consistent, but in some instances, we actually offer more time. And then in some less time. Could you address this, please? And how we came to get to where we are?
Thank you, Mayor Baldwin. We also have um, Fagan Stackhouse in the audience who can also speak to this item. And when we look at total rewards for all of our employees, we look at the total benefit package. And a portion of that um, is the accrued leave and how leave is accrued. Many states offer different options in the way of leave accrual, particularly um, some that are unionized states, um, look at it from one perspective and add additional. Some entities actually um, dock employees for sleep time. We don't. We pay an employee for the total 24-hour, 12-hour, or eight-hour work shift that they work. And so staff has looked at this issue and has found pretty much our policies to be in line with our peer cities for the most part. And Mr. Stackhouse is at the podium now. He can further elaborate on that.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Municipal Council, again, Fagan Stackhouse, HR Director. And that which the City Manager has indicated is uh, is exactly what we found. We did the, the benchmarking uh, in North Carolina to Durham and also there as the mayor indicated in Virginia, out to Texas. And we are fairly consistent. We don't dock people for the, the sleep time. And um, 24 hours uh, uh, would, would double. We're not looking at cost only. That would be in the tune of something like three and a half million dollars. That uh, would be the annual cost to, to make that change. And we, we feel that it's uh, it's pretty consistent. Uh, and there's the, the graduation up after so many years, then you, you gain more. And by the time that you reach 20 years of service, you are uh, earning uh, literally the 24 hours um, that um, that is, is being in question here. So for the most part, uh, we, we feel that we're consistent. Some union environments uh, may uh, have something different than negotiate. But here in North Carolina, we are fairly consistent.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Branch.
Yeah, just so I'm clear from what you're saying, Fagan, is that the hours that they're saying they will have to use is, are still the number of hours that they are accruing and earning each month. So it would be the same for employees that um, have to use a full day, um, that are on an eight-hour schedule. Based on what they accrue, they're accrue, they're accruing what they will have to spend. Is, is that a good way to?
Uh, uh, yes, sir, Councilmember Branch. That's
Okay.
That's how the accrual works. And as an aside, what you will also see is the accrual rate for other departments, the police department as an, as an example. And, and there are others that work more than uh, just eight hours on a given day. And certainly the police department does, certainly the emergency communications, uh, Raleigh Water, solid waste, a number of those. But they all are using the same standards and, as the gradations and the changes in the years. Then they begin to accrue more. The longer you stay, the greater the accrual rates uh, are for, for each employee.
Got you. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Um, Councilmember Bufkin, then Knight.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Stackhouse, uh, are, how are we doing on recruitment and retention in the fire department? I mean, and I asked that, obviously, this would tend to make Raleigh more attractive than our peer cities were we to make this change. But I guess the question I'm asking is it, is it needed? Would it be helpful? Are we having a problem with uh, with recruitment and retention?
Uh, Councilmember Knight, uh, recruitment is not a significant uh, problem at all. I would say that it's not a, a problem in the fire department. It's one of those occupations that people really, really love to, to be a, a part of and they're attracted to it. And given my many years of experience, uh, open the position up or the positions up and you will find that there are a number of candidates in which to choose from. We're working more specifically around diversity in, in, in that area. And so a, a lot of our attention will be focused on increasing the diversity uh, whether it's gender, whether it's uh, ethnicity and so forth.
Okay. Well, thank you for that answer. I, I um, I would like to see us do better than our peer cities for our firefighters. So I'm, I'm interested in, in taking a look at this change. I'm not sure today's the right day to do it. You know, we don't do a whole lot of budget impacts like this um, outside of the regular budget process. But maybe there's a, an exception to be made here. I, I would like to see us take a closer look at this and do something nice for our firefighters. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Knight?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I also agree with that. I, I'm not sure if we're in a hurry. I just saw Mr. Stackhouse's memo. It came out at 12:11. I really am just getting a look at it. Um, and it's specific to this issue more than the general documents we got um, um, last week. So I, you know, I don't know what committee would be best to put it in, but I would, I would um, support putting in a committee to give us a little more uh, time to look at it a little more critically and, and in a detailed manner. Thank you.
Any other questions? Based on Councilof Bufkins' comments, I was going to suggest we put this back on the agenda for a meeting um, on the 16th, um, as opposed to the committee. I would like to ask um, staff, is there a sense of urgency here?
There's really no sense of urgency. What we've been able to do is to go back, look at a number of our policies and we have extensive review. Actually, there's about nine levels of review that we take. And then once we are satisfied internally, we then go to the Civil Service Commission, uh, present to them and then back to the City Manager and up to here, the City Council. And we see these three policies. The general leave policy, which is being discussed right now, the disability, our accommodation disability policy, the military leave policy. All of these are companion policies, so we wanted to bring them all collectively so that we could get them passed because uh, we've, we see the need uh, with disability accommodations and see the need uh, with the military and trying to get all of that pretty well aligned and in sync. Uh, but we can certainly come back to the council on, on these uh, three policies.
Okay. Would everybody be okay putting this on our next agenda for action? With a report, a very specific report from staff? We okay? Okay. All right. Um, thank you. Um, if we could come back under special items, that would be terrific. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, next we have the report and recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Ken Bowers from Planning and Development. We have six items to report out. We'll start with a review of what is currently scheduled for October 19th, which is a total of four zoning cases, a comp plan amendment, a text change, and an annexation. So it's already a fairly heavy um, public hearing schedule for your mid-month meeting. We're planning to add, or proposing to add three items to that list and then three items to the next public hearing date um, of Tuesday, November 2nd. This is a correction from what's in your published agenda. The last item, CP 821, um, the agenda item states the staff is recommending um, the second meeting in November. Uh, based on uh, new information, we're now recommending that that go to November 2nd along with the other two items. So I'll go through these quickly and then uh, the presentation can come down and you can take action. The first um, item is text change TC 1021. This was drafted with the City Attorney's Office. And um, it uh, refines our conflict of interest standards in the code, um, updates references in the code to uh, Chapter 160D, the new um, uh, planning enabling statutes and also adjusts the board and commission composition. You may recall the discussion we had about the Appearance Commission specifically that is um, contained in this text change. Then the next two rezonings are for adjacent properties out Old Millburne Road. This is on the um, east side of the Neuse River, north of um, north of New Bern Avenue and, and bordering Knightdale. Uh, first of these parcels is uh, almost 108 acres, uh, rezoning from R4 to R6 with conditions. Um, Planning Commission has unanimous recommendation to approve. Issues appeared to be settled with the neighbors on both these cases and we're recommending October 19th. This is the other item, uh, a smaller tract of 35 acres, also to the same um, zoning from R4 to R6 with conditions. Again, unanimous approval, October 19th, recommended for the public hearing date. The next item um, is uh, 8304 Falls of Neuse Road, uh, more commonly known as Piper's Tavern. This is a rezoning that would place this split zone property into a single zoning district, uh, which would be NX3 with the parking limited frontage and conditions. Um, this did go through a couple items review. Our understanding is that most issues here have been resolved, but we're still recommending November 7th, or the 2nd public hearing. South and South Saunders is a um, request to uh, rezone um, .6 acres from NX to IX. Maintaining the frontage and adding some conditions. Planning Commission did recommend approval. There was one uh, one dissenting vote on that. It was five to one. We recommend the November 2nd public hearing. And then the last item is a comp plan amendment. And this is to adjust the uh, street plans that are, the, the proposed street network for development. This is out um, at the split between Battle Bridge Road and Rock Quarry Road. Currently developed primarily for commercial uses anchored by a food line. This is a residential component of this um, planned development area. And based on the uh, layout of the residential component, there are some adjustments to the streets that are recommended. Um, no outstanding issues. Planning Commission recommended approval unanimously and we're recommending the November 2nd public hearing. So that concludes the Planning Commission report.
Okay, could we take down the presentation, please? Thank you. Okay, um, the first item is the um, TC 1021. Um, this is recommended for a hearing date of October 19th. Um, there was, this was approved. Eight zero. Um, Mayor Portem Stewart, is that a motion?
Yes, move forward.
Okay. Um, do I have a second? Councilmember Melton, thank you. All right, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously, clerk. Next is rezoning Z 2621, Old Millburne Road. Um, again, October 19th is the recommended date for the public hearing. It was approved by Planning Commission eight zero. Do I have a motion on this? Councilmember, um, Branch, do I have a second? Um, Councilmember Bufkin, all in favor, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Okay. Um, next is um, Z 2721, Old Millburne Road again. Same, October 19th, eight oh approval. Councilmember Branch has made the motion. Do I have a second? Um, Councilmember Knight, all in favor? Okay. Um, that was unanimous, clerk. Next we have Falls of the Neuse. This was recommended for November 2nd and eight oh um, from the Planning Commission. Um, Councilmember Bufkin?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I, as the staff referenced, I received a communication late last week and I believe we've reached consensus on this one. Uh, the neighbors next door have reached agreement on their conditions. And uh, I committed to the applicant to ask that this be scheduled for October 19th.
Okay. Would you like to make that motion then?
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second? Um, Councilmember Melton has seconded, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you, clerk. That was unanimous. Thank you, Councilor Bufkin. Um, next we have Z 4621, South um, and Saunders Street. This was um, let me see. Five one vote. Um, staff recommends public hearing on November 2nd. Councilmember Fort, motion. Do we have a second? Um, Mayor Portem Stewart, all in favor? Your hand. Um, that was unanimous, clerk. Um, I have a question for um, Ken. It says here, the dissenting vote cited the concern that the approval appeared to better serve new residents and not existing residents. Can you explain that?
Not entirely. The meeting ran over and I actually did not, was not in attendance for this discussion. I believe it was related to the site's location across the street from Heritage Park.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, next we have um, CP 821, Rock Quarry Road. November 16th, recommended date, eight oh, Planning Commission vote.
Madam Mayor, I think um, in the presentation, you mentioned that staff now recommends November 2nd for this one.
Okay.
And I move as such.
All right. I'll, um, and second, Mayor Portem Stewart, all in favor? Okay, clerk, that was unanimous. All right, we now at the um, report and recommendation of the City Manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We have two items today under the manager's report. Um, John Enignost from Planning and Development Services is here to provide an update on the Capitol Boulevard North Corridor Plan. And I think he's in the audience already.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, good afternoon. Thank you for your time today. I'm happy to present this plan to you. At least a summary in preparation for its final review process. Uh, I do want to make a couple of notes before I get started with the presentation. Uh, I want to acknowledge the project manager for this plan, Christopher Golden, who's been part of it the entire time, as well as our lead consultant, WSP. Uh, the other note is that I have removed a few slides from what you saw in your backup materials to make this a little bit more brief for you today. Uh, and so there will be some slides missing, but they are in the backup for your reference. Uh, next slide, please. So I'll talk a little bit about the background of this plan and then talk about the contents of the plan report itself. Next slide, please. So the Capitol Boulevard North Corridor Study applies to the section of Capitol Boulevard between I-440 and I-540. We have shortened the name from Capitol Boulevard North to Capitol North for the purpose of adding it to the 2030 Comprehensive Plan. Uh, next slide, please. And so this project began about three years ago in 2018. And you might remember that it was intended to come before you uh, about six months ago in April. And we did have a bit of a delay in bringing it to you because we made some changes at the very end to ensure it had a strong enough focus on equity. Uh, next slide, please, and one more. And before I get into that, I will give a little background of, of how we developed the plan. Uh, so we had four rounds of public engagement, which during the, the early stages included uh, in-person public meetings and then transitioned to virtual as we moved into the pandemic. Uh, and then a lot of time spent out in the corridor. So pop-up events at the public library, at shopping centers, at the Triangle Town Center Mall. Uh, and then riding the buses. There are several bus routes that serve this area with high-frequency routes. Uh, and so riding the buses and speaking with folks there as well. Next slide, please. And so from that engagement, we developed four vision themes to guide the remainder of the planning process and to be a check basically on the recommendations that came out of it. So every time that we came up with new proposals, we did want to refer back to these vision themes and make sure that we were serving the goals expressed by the community. Next slide, please. And so here are the contents of the plan recommendations. Next slide, please. And so the first part, this is the part that we revised here in the last six months uh, at, at the end of the process. And that is to move the community investments in the plan to the beginning, to put those at the forefront. Because the transportation proposals, the projects that are recommended by this plan to improve the transportation system for Capitol Boulevard, we know are going to be impactful to existing communities and businesses there. And so knowing that, we have an obligation to serve those communities first when it comes to the other portions of the plan. And so this community investment section is now the first part of the plan and it's very clearly identified in the plan recommendations that there should be a sequence over time that community investments are applied and have time to take effect in the community prior to the implementation of the transportation and land use proposals. Next slide, please. And so here's a couple of examples of what I mean when I say community investments. These are things that are meant to stabilize the communities and businesses along Capitol Boulevard. And one thing I, I want to note, which is particularly important, is that Capitol Boulevard is home to one of the highest concentrations of naturally occurring affordable housing in Raleigh. It also has at least 200 small and local businesses, many of which are owned and operated by people of color. And so when we think about these investments, that's the people we're planning for and preparing to be benefactors of the other proposals in this plan. And so you can see some of the examples here on this slide. I do want to say that we, we did try very hard to vet these. We are not trying to do pie in the sky or wish list planning with this plan. And so with that in mind, we have actually provided fairly detailed implementation specifics for these items, including in many cases, dollar values that should be spent on them and timeframes in which they should be implemented, again, before the transportation proposals are implemented. Next slide, please. So what are those transportation proposals that could be so impactful to this area? Well, the first part of it is to convert Capitol Boulevard to a multi-way boulevard. And that means two different sets of travel lanes for vehicles. One on the inside for regional trips that would have no traffic signals between 540 and 440, enabling that trip to be made in as short as 15 minutes or less. And then outer lanes to serve local trips to provide full access to shopping centers and neighborhoods. And then space set aside in the center of the roadway for a potential future bus rapid transit route. Next slide, please. The way that those lanes are able to interface with each other is by having great separated interchanges. That is also the way that the bus rapid transit can be, can operate the most efficiently and provide the best travel times. But that is also something that takes up a lot of room, a lot of land. And that is why this could be particularly impactful to nearby shopping centers and other developments. Next slide, please. And so nearly every intersection that today has a traffic signal on Capitol Boulevard between 440 and 540 is proposed to have a great separated interchange or some reduction in access. Next slide, please. That would entail multiple projects which would need support from the North Carolina Department of Transportation. We are already working with the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization to figure out the funding streams that could be allocated for those projects and to prepare them for entry into those funding mechanisms. Uh, but that process, uh, as you are probably well aware, the North Carolina Department of Transportation uh, is facing some financial obstacles at this moment. And so we think the earliest that those could likely be funded is 2031. Uh, that's actually a benefit in giving us lead time to implement those community investment action items. Next slide, please. Now, in addition to the traffic benefits of converting Capitol Boulevard to a multi-way, there are equity benefits. Again, the bus rapid transit would be facilitated, but also crossing Capitol Boulevard would be made safer. And that's because pedestrians would not interact with the fast-moving regional lanes, would have shorter crossing distances and larger areas to wait if they are unable to cross the full width of the road in a signal, single signal cycle. Next slide, please. And here's an example of what that is projected to look like on an intersection on Capitol Boulevard today. And the reason we chose this uh, compact or urban diamond design for the interchanges, for many of the interchanges, is that it is a compact interchange that is, we think, going to have the least impact on existing development. Next slide, please. And here's an example of how the bus rapid transit stations could be integrated into those interchanges to allow uh, bus riders to access the bus stops and only have to cross half of Capitol Boulevard at any, at any one time and would avoid crossing Capitol Boulevard in between intersections. Next slide, please. After the transportation proposals, we have proposals for land use and development in the future. We expect that with bus rapid transit, uh, it will be beneficial to have additional density and a mix of uses to support the ridership and also to host those many small businesses and to provide employment opportunities for existing residential neighborhoods. Next slide, please. So each of the multimodal districts is recommended to have a bus rapid transit station and also includes recommendations for changes to the street plan, the urban form map, and the future land use map, as well as the bicycle facilities map in the comprehensive plan. All of those things having the goal of achieving uh, a, an integrated multimodal district around each bus rapid transit station that serves all users with a high level of service and provides opportunities for employment and housing. Next slide, please. So that's a summary of the Capitol North Corridor Plan. Uh, you have the full report in your backup materials. Uh, there also are some technical appendices that will be attached when it goes to the Planning Commission and when you see it. And so what staff is requesting today is that you refer this plan to the Planning Commission. Uh, and we anticipate that we could begin that review with the Planning Commission's November Committee of the whole meeting on November the 18th. Before that time, we have planned uh, two Ask a Planner sessions to inform the community about the contents of the final plan report. And those are scheduled for October 21st and 23rd. Uh, and I'd be happy to take any questions at this time.
Okay, um, Councilmember Branch, then Councilmember Cox.
Yeah, 'cause I think, um, thank you for the presentation and everything. And I just want to share some information with some of council who were not on. And I think only Councilman Cox and I think Mayor, you might have been on council when we first started, or it was Counselor Stewart. This was an area study that was put together for Capitol Boulevard north of 440. Um, so this was a study plan I think was already kinda, they were working on putting in place. Councilman Cox, I know you and uh, former council member, um, Crowder, um, were pushing for some of the meetings and the things in place in the neighborhood and the community. And I know you mentioned multi, multimodal and BRT. And I know you mentioned multimodal and BRT, but in the Wake County plan right now, there's no funding for BRT past 440. The part of Capitol Boulevard that has funding for BRT, and correct me if I'm wrong, someone please, is from downtown up to 440. That's where the current funding is. So this part, so all BRT that's currently been implemented, none of them went through any of this type of study in those areas because it's completely, it was something that's done completely separate because ultimately, I think the state is looking to open up Capitol Boulevard to help get traffic to go more through the area a lot faster. And this is my understanding is part of that. What kicked this off is part of that plan with the NCDOT and opening up Capitol Boulevard to more of a thoroughfare. So I just wanted to share that and give some background because I think some people are saying, "Well, they didn't do this type of study for South Wilmington Street or Western Boulevard or New Bern Avenue or the other parts of Capitol." This part is more related to the NCDOT work that they're looking to take place in this area.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Cox?
Uh, yes, I agree with Councilmember Branch. This ties in well with what NCDOT plans on doing north of 540, actually, where they want to turn US-1 into a freeway. And so when you get south of 540 next to Triangle Town Center and continue to 440, this street design will continue to help improve that flow of traffic, but at the same time also provide service locally and also be able to provide more modes of transportation, such as bikes and pedestrian in particular, as well as bus travel. And I really want to thank staff for the work that they've done on this over the past several years. The community engagement has been outstanding. There's been tremendous amount of input from the community. And when the time is right, I'd like to make a motion to have this sent forward as recommended in the agenda to the Planning Commission for the review.
Um, Councilmember Buckin?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions for our staff with my appreciation for being here and your presentation today. I was looking at the old slides that were posted on the agenda, and I have a couple of questions related to that. And to add, in addition to the background, Mr. Branch recited that although I wasn't on council, I was following this plan from the beginning because it was a companion to the Midtown St. Albans plan, and they shake hands, if you will, over there around Green Road. So my first question is, again, with the old slide, and there's a bullet point that says heights mostly are the same or lower than existing plan recommendations. Can you expand on that and explain to me, give me some context because that, you know, a plan that recommends the same or lower building heights on this corridor is not exactly consistent with supporting BRT and multimodal transit. So help me out with that a little bit, please.
Absolutely, Councilmember Buckin. So I think the important piece of information for that statement is that at the southern end of the corridor, near the interchange with 440 around the Highwoods Boulevard area, and at the north end of the corridor, near basically all of Triangle Town Center and its surrounding developments, the existing future land use map recommendations in combination with the urban form map, which is how we determine the height recommendation for zoning, recommends 12 to 20 stories. So most of the Triangle Town Center area is designated for regional mixed use. That in combination with its designation as an urban growth center, excuse me, city growth center on the urban form map, recommends a height of 20 stories. Looking at the market, we did have a market analysis subconsultant that provided us with analysis of the future real estate market for this area. We don't anticipate there being enough demand, even with bus rapid transit service, to support greater than 20 stories of height in Triangle Town Center and similarly with the Highwoods Boulevard area. And so really, a big part of this plan was refining those recommendations, was taking a closer look at the specific ways that people would be accessing these multimodal districts and providing an appropriate transition to existing neighborhoods while fostering the mix of uses that we do want to see. I think one of the issues that we've seen, and I don't want to say issue, but one of the things that may be challenging for bus rapid transit is the propensity or the predominance of single-story retail with surface parking. Almost all of the development of that nature on Capitol Boulevard is in areas that already has policy guidance to rezone to taller heights, five, seven, or even 12 stories, yet we still see the single-story retail. So one of the things we've attempted to do is to incorporate some office and residential mixed-use recommended future land use map areas to give directions to the development community, to give a vision for the future that these multimodal districts are not single-story shopping districts 20 years or 30 years from now, that they ought to be mixed use with some height, with some density, and that might mean scaling back the retail presence.
Okay, that's very helpful. So let me continue if I may, a related question, and this is probably just more detail than was in the slides, but please educate me. Because I don't see a lot of, I don't see anything really that speaks to the building frontage. And I think, but I think I'm understanding that the broad goal, generally speaking, is to get the buildings out closer to the roadway to promote transit walkability and bicycle use in the corridor. So can you speak to a little bit to the building frontages and the urban form, the kind of the streetscape look? And in the context of like what you just said, the single-story retail usually comes with a very large parking lot between the street and the store. So if that was enough context, could you just speak to the frontages that would be recommended?
Yes, so that's a similar story to the previous question. The existing policy guidance in the urban form map for the Highwoods Boulevard area and the Triangle Town Center area includes multiple urban thoroughfares, and then Capitol Boulevard itself is a transit emphasis corridor. All of those recommendations call for some frontage and in many cases, an urban frontage. And so that policy already exists. And so again, what we've tried to do is for those particular areas, the northern and southern ends, to refine that, to identify potentially additional areas, which are reflected in the multimodal district section of the plan report, some few additional areas where we could add to those urban thoroughfares. And then the one major change to the urban form map is the mini-city area, which does not currently have a mixed-use center mapped and does not currently have urban thoroughfares mapped on Millbrook, New Hope, and Calvary Drive. And so those are proposed to be amendments to the urban form map to map mini-city on both the east and west side with a mixed-use center and to add those urban thoroughfares. But we do want to delay that recommendation until after the community investments, and that is signaling that the city is not pushing for major redevelopment of the mini-city area until we have an opportunity to help those communities stabilize economically. And so we don't want to come right out of the gate and say, "Let's go ahead and have tall urban development and redevelop those areas."
Okay, last one. And I may respectfully disagree and suggest that you may be underestimating the demand. But that aside, do we have any transit-oriented development or equitable development around transit as a component of this?
There is a policy recommendation in the Appendix A, which is the policies and action items, that says that the equity fund or similar mechanism should be explored for this corridor at the point in time when it is programmed for bus rapid transit. As Councilmember Branch pointed out, this quarter does not currently have a plan for bus rapid transit. And so until the time that it does, it did not seem appropriate to staff to recommend the application of that type of mechanism because it would not relate to a particular public investment, aside from the roadway reconstruction. It wouldn't tie to a transit investment the way that it would as it's been recommended for, say, New Bern Avenue.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Stewart?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm thrilled about this plan. I want to echo much of what Councilmember Branch and Councilmember Cox said about this plan, the amount of time that's gone into it, the amount of community engagement that's gone into it. I just want to take a minute to highlight staff, y'all's great work on really thinking about the stabilization piece of this work and investing in our existing business owners and the existing affordable housing that's there and naturally occurring affordable housing. I think that is incredible and something that needs to happen and also to be emulated. So kudos and thank you, and I'm excited.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Knight?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, it does sound exciting, and it's a big deal. I know this started before a lot of us got on here, and I think this is the first time that at least some of us are hearing about this, this kind of, at this level. So it is exciting. A couple of things I'm interested in. It does seem that the need for more space for this type of design and the creation of what y'all are looking at, how dramatic is it going to be? I just think about, you know, what we have out there now in the right-ofways. Is it going to be pretty much, pretty dramatic in terms of what the needs are going to be in terms of widening this area? I know you're trying to make it all fit together and integrate as densely as possible, but is it going to be pretty dramatic? And I do appreciate, it sounds like from other councilors, y'all have had a lot of public outreach and working with both neighbors as well as business owners along there. But talk to me a little bit about that.
Yeah, there's no way to sugarcoat that. It would be a significant amount of right-ofway required south of the Lewisburg split. North of Lewisburg Road, the existing right-ofway is almost what is necessary. And in fact, north of Spring Forest Road is almost entirely what would be necessary. South of Lewisburg Road, where the existing right-ofway goes down to about 150 feet wide, the right-ofway that we are proposing for the main trunk of the multiway boulevard is 196 feet. And then at the interchanges, it would widen even further to accommodate, again, the interchange structures as well as any additional turn lanes that are required there. So yes, it will impact private property.
Okay, thank you. I know this does, like it or not, focused on vehicular transportation, but I would just like to say we need to keep, and I, and I know you are, but to keep focused on the multimodal opportunities that we need to keep here, especially on the cross streets and the routes. I don't, I did see as a challenge biking, and I don't see a lot of bike ways or paths or greenways running, I guess, parallel with Capitol. I know y'all, it looks like there's a focus on the crossroads, but I think there's an opportunity here to integrate better the multimodal aspects that we're all trying, you know, striving for here so that it isn't just a huge project that's focused only on vehicular transportation. So I would look forward to looking at, you know, more options or opportunities to fit in more and better multimodal ways of going about it. So thank you so much. I know this is a long process and has a long ways to go, and I look forward to working with y'all. But it is exciting, and that area does need it, and I look forward to seeing what we come up with. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton.
Thanks. These are some good discussions. I'm really excited about this plan. I just wanted to remind everyone that for today's purposes, we are to receive this and refer it to Planning Commission. So there's going to be more work that's done on this, and it's going to come back to council. And so I think for purposes of moving it along, I'm ready to second Councilmember Cox's motion to refer this to Planning Commission, and I appreciate the time that's gone into it. But this is coming back, so I just want everyone to remember that. Whenever Councilmember Cox is ready, I'm ready to second.
Councilmember Cox has made motion to move this to Planning Commission, seconded by Councilmember Melton, all in favor. That was unanimous, Clark. Yes, we've been talking about this for 10 years, so it's good to see the momentum that has been established and moving forward. So thank you to the team.
Thank you.
And the next item, Mayor and Council, you will recall, and earlier in the year, we amended the UDO to accommodate short-term rentals in certain zoning jurisdictions. So Pat Young, the Director of Planning and Development Services, is here this afternoon to give you a six-month update on that program and how it's working here in the City of Raleigh.
Thank you, City Manager, and good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Pat Young with Planning and Development. As you heard from the City Manager, we're going to give you a brief update on the implementation of the short-term rental, or what I'll call STR, here on out, text change and permitting program that you all approved back in February of this year. In February, what you did was repeal the previous homestay regulations, replace them with a short-term rental typology and program, amended the UDO to do that, allowed this in certain zoning districts, and you requested a six-month follow-up, and that's what this is today. As a reminder also, we, at the beginning, at the outset of this process, we worked closely with Airbnb, VRBO, and other homestay operators to notify their properties within the Raleigh City limits of the permitting requirements and the compliance timeline. That messaging began in March. And also in March, we gave a 90-day compliance timeline. So that expired, that grace period expired in June. So since June, we've been enforcing the permit requirements. So you'll see from this slide, we've received 193, and this data is through September 4th, so that's six months, March 4th to September 4th. We've received 193 permit requests, 152 have been approved, 41 are in review. Some of those are routine review, some of which are in extended review because applicants are struggling to get the required documentation that they meet the STR requirement. So we're continuing to try to work with these applicants to get those completed. So a majority of the 193 that we've received are single-family units, but there are quite a few multifamily, 34%, and only 3% have been in ADUs. And this slide, I know it's difficult to see at this scale, but is a map of the locations. The green is accessory dwelling units, again, difficult to see, but those are all located near downtown, multifamily units and single-family short-term rentals. We can certainly provide this backup data to you in any form you want. We thought this slide was very telling where it shows that it's being utilized across the city. As I mentioned earlier, we did reach out to operators to make sure that their properties were aware of this requirement, and it does require that a valid permit number be displayed on advertisements for these properties. The Airbnb, which is the largest operator of homestays, identified the city as a partner for an initiative, there's only 15 cities nationally, that was a portal program that allowed for high-quality information and escalation of any concern to conflicts with Airbnb properties. And the whole idea of this was to, you know, build trust with local government, tourism organizations. The information, I do want to stress, is aggregated. We don't have site-specific information about rental. It's aggregate data that does show overall utilization of the Airbnb program within the city. So as you're aware, zoning enforcement in Raleigh is handled on a complaint basis. That's primarily to be a resource management issue. We only have four zoning enforcement officers for the entire city and two supervisors. So just like any other area of concern, we respond to complaints. We have only had one complaint on short-term rentals, it was back in August. It was found to be valid in the sense that they were operating a short-term rental without a permit. We issued a notice of violation, and they came into compliance in September. So that's the only complaint that we've had since the adoption back in February. And as you see on the slide here, there are provisions that allow the STR to be provoked if there's certain violations, including noise violations. allow the STR to be provoked if there's certain violations, including noise violations or zoning violations through use of the property. Again, we haven't received any of those, just the one about the operator that did not have an STR. So, with that, I'll be happy to take any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Branch?
Yeah, just one question. Is it possible, because I know we had some residents come up and say that there's over 400 short-term rentals in Raleigh, but is that possible that some are considered Raleigh, using the Raleigh metro area, but not necessarily in the Raleigh ETJ or city limits?
Yes, Councilmember Branch, that's a good question. So, I have looked, we heard those same concerns. We have looked at the Airbnb and VRBO websites. What it appears that is the case is that a lot of operators are advertising as Raleigh when they're in fact in adjacent municipalities or unincorporated Wake County. But it is certainly possible that there are folks advertising that have not received a short-term rental permit. As I noted earlier, we do have an enforcement, complaint-based enforcement process. We certainly, it's your direction, we can bring back information on a more proactive response. The City of Asheville, that has a very high rate of tourism and had a large impact on their housing stock, has a full-time staff member dedicated to STR enforcement. And they do that proactively and they monitor the sites daily and that, and that kind of thing. That would be a resource issue and we would also need additional authority because we don't want to be accused of selective enforcement of our ordinance.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton.
Thank you. You know, I just want to put this in perspective. We've had one complaint since March. This is not an issue. I would like to, you know, if we think about short-term rentals in Raleigh, for a long time, there were no rules. And then there were really restrictive rules that then were put on hold, so there were no rules again. And we just passed these rules sometime this year. So, there may be some folks who don't know that they have to have a permit now. And it looks like from the material, from an education standpoint, we messaged to, you know, BBRO and Airbnb initially back in March. So, maybe what we can do is just make sure that we continue educating the vendors of the need for permits so that we can make sure that everyone who's operating has one. But I'm not in favor of allocating more resources to enforcement for a problem that doesn't exist. One complaint in however many months is not an issue. And it does sound like that some folks are advertising this is a Raleigh rental for, you know, marketing purposes when we all know that sometimes, you know, just outside Raleigh, for all intents and purposes, looks like Raleigh to a guest or visitor, but it's not really in our jurisdictions. So, I just want to keep it in perspective that we have had one complaint since March and that there may be some folks who are operating without permits. And if so, let's just do what we can to make sure they understand that they need a permit. If it's brought to our attention, that we enforce it. And maybe we do another round of education with the vendors. I'm not sure if that's the right word, vendor, but you know what I'm saying, with BBRO and those sites. Because it sounds like we messaged them in March, but maybe another round would be good. Periodic reminders may be helpful.
Okay. Councilmember Cox?
Yes, Patrick, you said that we collect data in the aggregate, not site-specific. So, does the aggregate data indicate that there are 152 short-term rentals in Raleigh or does it indicate more? So, for example, tax data, for example, or any other aggregate data that might be there?
Right. So, Councilmember Cox, a good question. The aggregator portal is looking at it throughout Wake County. It doesn't have it broken down by municipality. So, again, we'd have to do additional, we have to get additional information from the Airbnb to, in order to disaggregate that and to get you a clear answer on that question.
Yeah, I would like to, I would like to understand that because even though we only have one complaint, I'm very interested in understanding how this is impacting our housing stock.
Any other questions? So, I would just say, you know, this came to our committee before we approved it. And we had people come to committee who talked about how being able to do a short-term rental actually helped pay their mortgage and helped them stay in their homes. We had one woman who had been diagnosed with cancer. She said that this was what enabled her to stay in her home. We have had similar testimony from others. So, I would just like to say, I agree with Councilmember Melton. We have put a lot of effort into this upfront. We partnered with Airbnb, with the portal. If there's some information that we can garner, that would be helpful. I think that would be great. But I don't want to see us consuming a lot of resources on this issue. So, thank you very much for bringing this forward. And I take it we will get another report in six months. I think that's what the committee indicated, reports every six months.
Yes, Mayor, we'll continue to provide this information every six months. And if I might quickly, we certainly can do an additional round of outreach with the operators, as Councilmember Melton suggested. That's something I think we're resourced to do and have ongoing relationship with those folks. We'll make sure we do that. Thank you for your time today.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, County Manager. Anything else? Because you're always slipping something in, so.
County Manager.
I think she was just promoted or something.
Tidal today. But that concludes my report, Mayor and Council. Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay. And we're saying some prayers for your daughter, too. So, yeah. I have to say, I was really impressed with her out at the game the other day. So, still running around, doing what she could, but that was sight to see. So, let her know that we're all, she's in our thoughts. Okay? Thank you. All right. Next, we have the report and recommendation of the Raleigh Historic Development Commission.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilors. I'm Tanya Tully with the Department of Planning and Development. With me here today is Gaston Williams, Chair of the Raleigh Historic Development Commission. And I have a brief presentation for you. The City of Raleigh has received a rezoning application, next slide, in the Prince Hall Historic Overlay District. And it is for nine parcels. And the request is in part to remove the historic overlay district designation. Next. State law and the Unified Development Ordinance do require additional steps for either the addition to or reduction of boundaries of historic overlay district. And that is to, for RHDC to review and/or repair a report about the proposed change and to have that report sent to the North Carolina Department of Cultural Resources' Office of Archives and History. The state has 30 days to provide comment, after which time the rezoning application will perceive, proceed during the regular process, including Planning Commission and City Council public hearings. Next. The initial analysis by RHDC is that it's five parcels that have historic buildings on them. And there are also five vacant parcels. It's actually four parcels with historic buildings. There are five buildings. One is on, it's like, that doesn't add up to nine. One parcel has two buildings on it. Prince Hall became a historic overlay district in 2012 and is one of the largest and most historic relatively intact black residential and cultural concentrations in North Carolina. In 2015, three parcels went through a rezoning process and were removed from the historic overlay district. Next slide. This image shows the darker blue down on the left, the portion of the district that was removed. And the, on the right, the sort of lighter blue are the parcels that are in the current rezoning application. The black boundary is the historic overlay district boundary. Next. And these are just some pictures of the contributing resources in the historic building, I mean, in the historic district. A former funeral home now used as a childcare center, single-family residence. Next. Additional single-family residences and a former barber shop. Next. The recommendation today is to take administrative action to refer the Historic Development Commission's report and analysis to the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources and also to refer it to the Planning Commission as part of the regular rezoning application process. That's the end of my presentation. And Mr. Williams has something briefly he'd like to say.
RHDC, like many of the commissions you are aware of, is blessed with an intelligent and very energetic staff for which we're thankful. As this process works forward, don't be surprised if we include a discussion for a path that allows the applicant to proceed forward without deconstructing one of the most historic districts in the city.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Branch?
Yeah, I move that we refer this to the National and Cultural Resources Office of Architects and History as well as the Planning Commission.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Councilor Melton. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay. That was unanimous, Clerk.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have a report and recommendation of the Economic Development and Innovation Committee.
Yeah, no report today. We have one item pending, which is the Downtown Raleigh Alliance Public Realm Study. Our next meeting is going to be next Tuesday, October 12th, at 2:30 PM, virtual. So, that's a little different than we normally do. It's next Tuesday, October 12th, 2:30 PM, virtual.
Okay, thank you. Growth in Natural Resources?
No report. Our next meeting is October 26th at 4:00 PM and it is also virtual.
Okay. Next is Safe, Vibrant, and Healthy Communities Committee. We will be holding a virtual meeting on that same date at 11:30. Next is Transportation and Transit.
No report, no pending items, no meeting at this time this month.
Oh, we'll, we'll figure out how to change that, Councilmember Branch.
That's why I said at this time.
Thank you. Next, we have the report of the Mayor and City Council. Okay, I'm going to start with Mayor Protem Stewart.
No report.
Councilmember Knight?
One second. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a reminder, I do have a listening session next week, October 13th, on ARPA, American Recovery Program Act. I didn't say that right, I don't think, but maybe the Rescue Act. I forgot the name, with our Budget Director, Mary VQ. And looking forward to that. And then we'll have a general discussion on issues imported to District E as well as the rest of the city. So, 7:00 PM, October 13th. And I'll put the Zoom link out as soon as possible. Also, want to bring up about the Oberlin Road closure. Just would like to, a quick response from someone on staff if indeed we do believe that's going to be four months. That is going to be a really, really pain for a lot of folks. We know that's a major corridor for many folks in the city. I've been getting a lot of calls on it and I'm assuming, and sure that Councilman Ford has as well. Madam Manager, is there anyone that could speak to that, please?
Yes, Sarah. Thank you, Councilmember Knight. I think we have Aline Naverit from Public Utilities/Raleigh Water here to speak to that item.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. You're correct. This is a really disruptive project. It's a really tough area for our contractors to work. And this is a really important project. We are replacing pipes that are approximately 100 years old and have a pretty high break rate at this point in time. So, the good news is, the contractor's on schedule. We've spoken with him as of this morning. Work is proceeding well. I do want to point out that the current detour is only supposed to be in place for about five more weeks. And then the detour is going to change. So, right now, we have one of the ramps on Wade Avenue closed and we have a second crew that's working there on the same project. And when they finish that work, that second crew is going to move over also onto Oberlin, north of Wade, to expedite some of that work, which means the detour is going to change from Craig Street to Wade Avenue and St. Mary's. So, it's going to divert traffic further around the neighborhood than it is right now. So, at this point in time, we're still, we're on schedule. Staff is pleased with the contractor's progress so far. And we're going to keep our fingers crossed for some good weather so that the contractor can keep making this good progress that they are.
Thank you for that. Yes, as y'all know, if this continues through the holidays, it will be very, very disruptive. There are two major churches along there as well as obviously commercial enterprises, as well as obviously a lot of folks that live around there and need to use that to get to work and for other needs. So, thank you for that. I'll look forward to an update in the next few weeks. But thank you. That's great. I just want to finish with, had a great weekend at the Bluegrass Festival and saw some of you down there. It was great to see the city so live downtown and look forward to more of those. But it was great to be out and about with, with all the rest of Raleigh this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford?
Yes. Madam City Manager, I did have a question about getting an update regarding Heritage Park. I know we talked a few months ago about the possibility of the city and the county coming together and having a conversation with the housing authority about the prospective plans for that community. So, I just wanted to find out when we could get an update about some of those conversations.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. In conversation with Larry Jarvis this week, who has been in conversation with Wayne Felton from the Raleigh Housing Authority, the housing authority is working to enter into a contract with a firm that's going to help them do some strategic community engagement, outreach, and some stakeholder activities. So, once that contract is solidified, we will have a better idea of what role the city and the county will play in helping RHA to do this, this project, this important project with a high degree of dignity and respect. So, more to come, but work is happening behind the scenes every day.
Thank you.
Are there plans to hold a work session on this?
Yes. One of the requests early on was, could we do a joint work session? And as some of the contract work starts to happen on the housing authority's behalf, we can pull together so that we'll be able to communicate and articulate what each of the three respective parties' role will be in this development and how we're intertwined in this work and how we're all going to leverage each other and the resources that we bring to the table.
Yeah, I think too that what I heard from the City Council last time was, we want to have somewhat of a say in what goes on there. So, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Bufkin?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a report today, but I do want to remind the council and the listening public that I'll be hosting a District A Town Hall meeting on redistricting October 21, 7 o'clock PM. We'll have our city staff, along with guests from the League of Women Voters, Raleigh Apex NAACP, and Common Cause North Carolina to talk about redistricting on October 21, 7 o'clock PM. Call information will be forthcoming.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Branch?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I only actually have one item. In the presentation that we just had around the Capital North project, staff mentioned considering small grants and things for local businesses. And we know how far out we're looking for this project. So, I'm going to ask if staff can look for a pilot that we can look to implement some of these opportunities to help the small businesses in the neighborhoods and the communities. Well, we're implementing BRT currently. I know New Bern Avenue is light-years ahead of the other three corridors, but I think that makes it a great opportunity to look at how we can support the local business alliance in a small, possibly a small business incubator. So, I'll ask if staff can look into that and come back with some information. Again, we're looking to do this already for Capital North. Let's bring it in, I think, a little closer to home. Let's bring it in, I think, a little closer to home, is the reason why I'm bringing it up.
Okay, Councilmember Cox?
Yes, the main concern that I have for today is that the census information, the census data has been finalized, and the Census Bureau has distributed that information mid-September. And I was wondering when we will be getting an update on this here at council, so that we can consider what districts are out of balance and what we need to do to go forward to make sure that our city council districts are in balance.
So Robin, are you gonna take that, or you want me to answer it?
Well, I think perhaps we can answer it together. I think the Planning and GIS staff has the information and is working on trying to come up with some potential maps that would be balanced, just using the generally recognized, sort of high-level concepts that you would follow to redistrict. The numbers for the population for the districts have been distributed to the council, and I think that perhaps, I think it's the week of October 25th, Marshall, that I think that they should have something ready. And Marshall and I have talked about how to communicate that to council members, and we'll be back in touch. But that's the week that we're believing that something for you to really look at will be available. Do you have anything to add, Marshall?
No, I think that is a good summary for you, Councilmember Cox, and we will be in touch with your management analysts to set those meetings up.
Okay, now, as part of this, we had talked previously about the need in terms of redistricting, that there has to be significant public engagement in order to accomplish redistricting. And I was wondering what the plan is for that as well.
It is being developed as we speak, understanding that community and stakeholder engagement is a critical component of this work, since it will be changing boundaries for some years to come. So as we get that data and get everything plotted on a map, we'll be in a better position to figure out how we need to stand up community engagement. But it is an integral component of the work that we're going to do in the next month or so.
Okay, and then in the meantime, the raw data will be made available so that people can have a look at it.
Yes.
Yeah, I think the raw data is available. You know, you can Google it and get that raw data.
Well, you know, I have a PhD in computer science, and I've been Googling and looking at the Census Bureau website, and I haven't been able to figure it out. So if you have someone on staff that can provide some information, I would love to meet with them.
Hey. Take care of that.
Mr. Cox, you're also welcome to come join our Town Hall meeting on October 21st.
I will put it on my calendar.
We look forward to having you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Melton?
No report.
Okay, I have one item. We have a work session on October 12th. The study group will be coming forward, the one that made recommendations on council elections and other items. They will be doing a presentation, but at that time, we're also going to entertain public comment. So if anybody would like to speak on this issue, we would ask that they sign up by 5:00 on Friday. And, but this is gonna be a little different type of public comment. We're gonna do lightning round. We've never done anything like this before, so we're trying to figure it out. But, you know, one minute per person, we're gonna see how many people sign up. But it's more like a first effort to get some public comment. And we don't normally do these during work sessions, but look to make our work sessions a little more interactive.
Then he's just checking on you.
I'm sorry. Marshall, you are not muted. Are you supposed to be, hello? Marshall, are you trying to speak, or I'm confused?
I am not. I should have been on mute. My daughter is being discharged as we speak, so she was calling so that I could hear her voice. So I apologize for the interruption, but I am a grateful mom right now that she is okay.
Well, we all are, thank you. Okay, that was all I had. And next, we have appointments. Clerk?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
All right. The first item is Arts Commission. You have two vacancies. Mayor Protem Stewart nominated Tanya Samar, so that will be on the next agenda. Next item, Fair Housing Hearing Board, one vacancy. Raquel Rogers received five votes, so would be appointed. So that takes care of the Fair Housing Hearing Board. They're at a full stage now. The next item, Hispanic and Immigrant Affairs Board, one vacancy. The Community Representative and Tallulah Pascal Fanucci received five votes, so will be appointed. The next is the Hispanic and Immigrant Affairs Board, Professional Category, one vacancy. There were no nominations, so that'll carry over to the next meeting. Historic Cemeteries Advisory Board, one vacancy, no nominees. Human Relations Commission, one vacancy for youth members, and no nominees, that will carry over. The Human Relations Commission, we have two vacancies for alternate members, no nominations, so that will carry over.
Clerk? Could we, I know when we kind of reworked the Human Relations Commission, we have different categories that we're trying to fill. So for instance, we have a youth member. Can you let us know what skillsets are needed, or what specific categories we're trying to fill, so we can do a better job of trying to get the appropriate people on board?
Okay, on human relations, we're talking about, yes, ma'am?
Yes.
We'll take care of that. Next item, Planning Commission, you have one vacancy. Carmen Cogdon received two votes. Irene Godnez received five votes. I Queeler did not receive any votes. Ms. Godnez is appointed, and you're new Planning Commission member. Stormwater Management Advisory Commission, there's one vacancy. There's no nominees. And on this one, I think you received information that all of the suggested categories have persons in those categories. Of course, we can add others, but this one is sort of a free-for-all, can be filled by any area of expertise. So that's all on the nominations. I mean, excuse me, the appointments on nominations. Let me get caught up here. Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, you have two vacancies as the terms of Dwight Ottwell and Elizabeth Hester are expiring. Mr. Ottwell would like to be considered for reappointment. Ms. Hester does not wish to be considered.
Councilmember Melton?
I move to reappoint Mr. Ottwell.
Do you have a second? Councilmember Bufkin is seconded, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously, Clerk?
Mayor, I also have a nomination for the open seat.
Okay.
I nominate Celis, C-E-L-I-S, Bravo Taylor, hyphenated last name, B-R-A-V-O, hyphenated T-A-Y-L-O-R.
What district?
That, I'm not sure. That is a VPAC recommendation, but I will make sure she fills out the information, and her name will just roll to the ballot for next.
Okay, I just always like to look at the geographic diversity of a board.
Okay, yeah. I told him I'd make the nomination, but we'll get her info too.
Okay, thank you.
When you receive your ballot next time, you will have her interest form and all of the breakdown on demographics. So that will be included next time. Okay, the next item is the Environmental Advisory Board. You have one vacancy as the term of Graham Smith is expiring, and he is not eligible for reappointment. Okay, the next item, Go Triangle Board of Trustees. The term of Will Allen III is expiring. He is eligible for reappointment and would like to be considered.
Okay, Councilmember Ford?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to reappoint Mr. Allen. I think he's got a very strong attendance record, and he's very active on the board. And if he's willing to serve again, it would be my motion to have him reappointed.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Melton, all in favor? Okay, Clerk, that was unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the Historic Resources and Museums Advisory Commission. You have two vacancies as the term of Mark Turner and Alicia McGill are expiring. Mr. Turner does not wish to be considered for reappointment. Ms. McGill would like to be considered and has a very good attendance record.
Councilmember Melton?
I move to reappoint Ms. McGill. I also have another nomination for the open seat, but I move to reappoint Ms. McGill.
Okay, seconded by Mayor Protem Stewart, all in favor? Okay, Clerk, that was unanimous, and your nomination is?
I nominate John Hinshaw. He's in District D.
Okay, thank you. That will appear on the next agenda, along with his interest form. The next item is the Raleigh Transit Authority. A letter of resignation has been received from Lawrence Carter. He is a regular member, therefore you have a vacancy for consideration. And best practice would be to elevate the longest-serving alternate, which would be Jen Overstat, to a regular member and declare a vacancy for an alternate.
Councilmember Branch?
I move with said standard.
Okay, seconded by Mayor Protem Stewart, all in favor? Okay, thank you, that was unanimous, Clerk. And I would also like to ask that we inquire of the Transit Authority skillsets that are needed on that board.
Be glad to do that and provide it on the next agenda.
My turn here real quick.
Excuse me, Councilmember Ford had her hand raised?
Yeah, thank you. I'd also like to say, Mr. Carter may have filled a special need with some perspectives as it relates to folks with disabilities. So I think that would be important for us to give some consideration to, as well as we're looking for an alternate for the board.
Agreed.
Very, very good, and you are correct. He did fill a position that the Transit Authority, and basically, I think, started by Mayor Baldwin a couple of appointments ago. So we'll get that on the agenda. The next item is the Substance Use Advisory Commission. You have two terms that are expiring, Lynn Williams and Ryan Johnson. Both are eligible and would like to be considered for reappointment, and you have their attendance records on the agenda.
Councilmember Melton?
I move to reappoint both.
Okay, do we have a second? Councilmember Branch, all in favor? Okay. Unanimous, Clerk?
Okay, thank you. And you have one other item relating to the Substance Use Advisory Commission. They are recommending the removal of two members from the commission, Joshua Bishop and Ricardo Young. There's been an attendance problem, and contacting them has not been successful. So the commission is recommending that they be removed and declare the two vacancies.
Okay, we have to vote on that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to declare two vacancies. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mayor Protem Stewart, all in favor? Okay, that was unanimous, Clerk?
Thank you, and that's all I have at this time.
Well, we have one thing on there. Vacancies are declared, the commission submits the following names for consideration. And there's three people. What I would suggest is we ask them all to submit their letter of interest, and that come to us at the next meeting.
But not nominate them at this point, just put them on a look at list?
Yes, please.
Okay, all right, I can do that. Okay, then that's all I have.
Okay. Next, we have the report and recommendation of the city attorney.
I don't have any report today, Mayor.
Okay, report and recommendation of the city clerk.
Okay, you received a copy, draft minutes of the September 21 work session and regular session, and your agenda packet for consideration of approval.
Before approval.
Do you have a, seconded by Mayor Protem Stewart, all in favor? Clerk, that was unanimous.
Okay, the last item I have is the Civil Service Commission. We had a vacancy created in the employee-elected slot as Mr. Armstrong moved out of the city, so it's no longer eligible. So we had an election, or call for an election for city employees, and we received only one candidate, Minew Lee. So he was declared the winner by acclamation. But according to the procedures for the Civil Service Commission, his name is to be submitted to you for confirmation. It would be for a four-year term.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Branch? Is that a motion? Oh, motion to approve? Do we have a second? Councilmember Knight has seconded, all in favor. Please raise your hands. Anyone opposed? Okay, passes unanimously, Clerk?
Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we'll enter a closed session, and I have a motion to read. Motion is in order to enter a closed session pursuant to GS 143 318.11A1, to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina, are not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statute. GS 143 318.11A9, to discuss and take action regarding plans to protect public safety that relates to existing or potential terrorist activity, and to receive briefings by staff members, legal counsel, law enforcement concerning actions taken, or to be taken to respond to such activities. So move, do I have a second? Mayor Protem Stewart, all in favor? Okay, Clerk, that was unanimous. We'll now enter closed session. Thank you.
Hi everybody, we have just returned from closed session where the council provided direction to staff on the items listed in the closed session motion. Council will reconvene at seven o'clock this evening. We will see you then. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.